Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here. I'd like to call the meeting of April 21st, 2023 to order. Do we have any special intentions? Councilwoman McKinney?
Yes. Yes, I would just like to ask for prayers for my family and the family of my in-laws. My father-in-law passed away on Tuesday after a struggle with dementia and Parkinson's. So please pray for the family and pray for my in-laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'd like to call on Reverend Byron Clay to lead us in prayer, please.
Good morning. God bless each and every one of you as we prepare to begin this council meeting. Let me just take a second to acknowledge that in our presence today, I have actor Ty Bridges with me from Different Strokes and Reverend Derek King, who is the nephew of Martin Luther King Jr. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, it is in profound reverence we bow to your holy and your righteous name, with the realization that you are God and beside you there is no other God. And we thank you this morning for your loving kindness and your tender mercies. And it is because of your mercy that we are not destroyed. And your compassion never fails, for you give us new mercies and new grace every morning, for great is thy faithfulness. And we thank you, God. You said in your word that you will be our sun and our shield and that you will give us grace and glory and no good thing will you withhold from us. So I lift up this morning this great city of Kenner. I lift up the mayor, the council, the chief of police, all of his public servants, and I ask that you would imbue them, oh God, with your spirit of integrity. Thank you, God, for men and women who have offered themselves to serve humanity and to bless your holy name. We lift up the council lady this morning, McKinley, who has asked us to pray for her family. You are able to do exceedingly abundantly above anything that we can ask of things, according to the power that works on the inside of us. So we ask you for your grace and your mercy toward that family. You said in your word, oh God, for us to come to your throne when we are in need of help and strength, and you will give us grace and mercy. All of those who sit under the sound of my immaterial voice, oh God, as they prepare to discuss the plans to move this city forward, I ask that you would give them the wisdom and the providence, oh God. Give them the intentional and deliberate heart to do the right thing, to uplift the people of this city, to move this city forward. And I thank you for each and every one here this morning. Give them grace and give them more grace and more grace. And finally, oh God, I ask that you will keep them in your perfect will. It is in the most precious and powerful and perfect name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ we pray this morning. Amen. God bless you.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Branigan, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. Please note that the vice chairman Brennan will serve as chairman. My chairman, George Branigan, will serve as acting mayor for this meeting. Do we have any correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads?
Mayor Branigan?
Yes, we have stuff going on in the city of Kenner this weekend, starting with the Italian Heritage Festival starts tonight at 6:00. And also tomorrow from noon to 10:00 p.m., we ask people go out and enjoy themselves, have a great time. There's a lineup of bands. There are six different bands playing over the two days. Also, music and movies in the parks start Fridays and Saturdays, May 5th and 6th. And again, we have a great lineup of bands and movies on the days through those weekends, those Friday and Saturdays throughout the month of May. I want to thank everyone that's involved with these events that go off without a hitch because the backbone of our city is our loyal employees that make us shine. We are lucky to have you and hope that you know that your efforts do not go unnoticed. Thank you. I also want to thank the Department of Transportation from Louisiana for the resurfacing on Williams Boulevard. Kind of makes you forget about the bumps and everything that we had before, but when you drive from 32nd Street now to Veterans, it's really, really done a great job in fixing that area. And the last thing I got is I wanted to thank Mayor Glazer and the administration, all of the volunteers and city employees, and Billy Nungas's office for the cleanup that happened on Monday at LaSalle Landing. All of the beds were redone and it really looks great. Everyone had a helping hand and we're very proud of LaSalle Landing that we were able to get it back into that, you know, that look. And that's it. Council President?
It's amazing. The man's been mayor for four hours and thinks he's done. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Under resolutions, motions, and other items from the floor, the clerk has received a resolution approving a scoreboard larger than 150 square feet at Butch Dewey Playground in Field 1. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to object to the council amending the agenda at this time? Please come forward and express your opposition. Seeing none, I have a motion by council member Schwartz, seconded by council member Brennan to add item 13B to the agenda. All council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Under the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of April 6, 2023. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2329-23 Farmers Market Hub LLC to hold a public gathering every Thursday from May 2023 through May 2024 from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of a farmers' art market at the parking lot across from the exhibition hall, 400 block of Williams Boulevard. Item 3B is application number 2311-23 Patriot Nation Men's Club to hold a public gathering on May 6, 2023 from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the purpose of an annual crawfish cook-off at the parking lot across from the exhibition hall at 400 block of Williams Boulevard. That will conclude the consent agenda. I have a motion by council member McKinney, seconded by council member Wilmot, for the consent agenda. All council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item 8, public hearings for final passage. Item 8A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,205. An ordinance approving the planned re-subdivision of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, Square 158, Kenner Heights subdivision, into Lot 1A, and further approving a planned unit development for an office and warehouse development for the storage of recreational vehicles on new lot 1A, Square 158, Kenner Heights subdivision, Kenner-Jefferson Parish, Louisiana. I have a motion by council member Sharwood, seconded by council member Dunn, to open the public hearing. All council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. We're now in a public hearing and the planning department has a presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Chris Lewinsky. I am the assistant director of the planning department. Mr. Dufour was unable to be here today, so hopefully this goes smoothly. This is a planned unit development case. The proposal is for a re-subdivision of lots 1 through 5, Square 158, into new lot 1A, and the new construction of an office warehouse on Lot 1A, Square 158, Kenner Heights subdivision. The applicant is Jordan Mohammed. The owner is James Mohammed. There was a neighborhood meeting held on February 13th, 2023, and the applicant sent out four invitations for this meeting. The reports submitted by the applicant indicates that no one attended except the applicant. According to the applicant, no one invited, contacted him by phone or email to comment or ask any questions about his proposal. Lots 1 through 5 are situated, I'm sorry, lots 1 through 5 are situated at the southeast corner of Square 158 and front both 18th Street on the south and Maria Street on the east, and is generally bound by canal number 5 to the north and the airport access road to the west. The property is zoned R1P residential planned unit development. The adjacent property to north and west is governed by Special Ordinance 3135, adopted by the city council on January 7, 1982, and developed as an AT&amp;T maintenance facility. The property across Maria Street to the east is owned by the applicant and governed by Special Ordinance 11457, adopted August 23, 2018, approving the current office warehouse use. Lot 15B and 10A, Square 151, located due south across 18th Street, are zoned R1P planned unit development and are undeveloped and owned by the airport. Finally, Lot X on Square 151 is governed by Special Ordinance 3221, adopted May 20, 1982, and approved the current use of offices and a contractor's storage yard. The existing lots 1 through 5 are uniform and each measure 20 feet by 120 feet. The new lot 1A is uniform and measures 100 by 120 feet and totals 12,000 square feet. Lot 1A meets the minimum lot requirements for this zoning district. The planned unit development proposal includes the new construction of an approximately 1,822 square foot warehouse building for the storage of recreational vehicles. There will be three warehouse roll-up doors, and three standard doors are proposed located to the right of each roll-up door. A minimum of three parking spaces are required. Three parking spaces are proposed, including one handicap parking space. Minimum area setback and height regulations are based on the district in which the use is governed, which would be SI, Special Industrial District. This proposal meets all setback and height regulations for that zoning district. There will be 124-foot-wide access drive fronting 18th Street. There will be individual LED lighting fixtures attached to each side of the building. These will be downward-facing lights to avoid impact to adjacent properties. The landscaping plan meets the city's minimum landscape requirements. The applicant is also proposing to build four-foot sidewalks along 18th Street. The sidewalk fronting 18th Street will have detectable warning surfaces on the east and west side of the access drive. No dumpster is proposed. The site will utilize city trash pickup. Utility companies have indicated that there are no facilities in the area and that the service, and that service is available to support the development. The proposed development is consistent with Pattern for Progress Future Land Use Plan. The planning commission recommends approval of this proposal.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council at this time? Any council members have any questions of the planning director?
No.
Seeing none, I have a motion by council member Sharwood, seconded by council member Dunn, to close the public hearing. All council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. I have a motion by council member Sharwood, seconded by councilman Dunn, on approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 8B is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,191. An ordinance levying the annual tax mileage rates for the 2023 totaling 17 and 71 hundredths mils on the dollar of the assessed valuation of all taxable property within the corporate limits of the city of Kenner, Louisiana, on the 2023 tax rule. I have a motion by council member Lahat, seconded by council member Sharwood, to open our public hearing. All council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. We're now in a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the council, please come forward. Seeing none, I have a motion by council member Lahat, seconded by council member Sharwood, to close your public hearing. All council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. I have a motion by council member Lahat, seconded by council member Sharwood, to approve.
One moment. Council Clerk, Councilwoman Wilmot would like to speak.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to have the administration give an explanation on it for the record. Thank you.
This is the mileage, the mileage you're voting on is the same rate as last year. It is the mileage that the taxpayers voted on at the last election. Last year it had increased to the 17.71, and we're just asking for y'all to pass levy this same tax mileage rate.
This is something that comes up every year.
Every year, yes, you have to levy. So it's not a reassessment year, so there's no changes. So in the future, there may be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. All council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 9 is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. Item 9A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,206. An ordinance approving the sale of lots 13, 14, and 15, Square 21, Old Kenner subdivision, Kenner-Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, which lots are owned by the city of Kenner. Mr. Chairman, if I could, request a one-meeting deferral. This was inadvertently put on this agenda. It requires a 28-day layover in accordance with the charter. I have a motion by council member Lahat, seconded by council member Brennan, for a one-meeting deferral. All council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution requesting the Jefferson Parish Legislative Delegation endeavor to allocate and prioritize future COVID-19 recovery dollars or other available funding towards the widening of Interstate 10 between Veterans Boulevard and Williams Boulevard, and expressing the full support of the Kenner City Council for the completion of this project. I have a motion by council member Wilmot, seconded by council member Dunn.
Councilwoman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution I put on. It was brought to my attention by State Representative Joe Stagni. I understand that this similar type of resolution was already passed with the Jefferson Parish Council. Again, there's a state mega project dealing with the widening of the interstate, and the last step to be done is the part right here from Williams to Veterans that needs to be widened. We're at bottlenecks. So it is an issue, and right now we're asking that the governor, the president of the Senate, and the Speaker of the House, and our legislative delegation be notified that we are in full support of the widening of the interstate for that project. Before, it was like $180 million. It's been sitting on the back burner. Now it's going to cost the state somewhere's around $250 million to complete that project. Very important, of course, you know, we need to have our roads widened right there to relieve that bottleneck. And I ask for co-authors on this legislation so we can send word on this legislation that we're all behind it. And I ask that our acting mayor, police chief, and this entire body, please support and consider supporting and joining in on co-authors at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Would anybody like to be added as a co-author?
Yes.
Chief?
Yeah, I'll ask that you send a certified copy after a lot of years. This council.
Absolutely. Council members, you want to be added as co-authors? Thank you. We'll take care of it.
Thank you, Councilman.
All council members in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 13B is a resolution approving a scoreboard larger than 150 square feet at Butch Dewey Playground, Field 1. I have a motion by council member Sharwood, seconded by council member Brennan. All council members in favor say aye.
Aye. Councilwoman Sharwood?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just want to let everyone know, I'm sorry about putting this on so late, but the scoreboard just came in. This is for the East Bank Little League at Butch Dewey Playground on Field 1. The sign is going to be similar to the Chappelle sign, it would be about 150 feet away. The only difference is the color, and it's going to say East Bank Little League instead of Chappelle. Ronnie came to me about this, and I'm full support of it, and they need, the same company's going to be installing it. They don't want you to be any problem, and it should be up by the end of the year. The baseball league, year ending, done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, 4260 East Royal Drive, 50th and 51 years. The only question I have about this, Councilman Sharwood, is we didn't hear anything from the planning department on this. I just want to make sure that this signage meets all of the codes and regulations because Councilwoman Dunn had an issue with a billboard a while back and come to find out it did not meet the code. So I just want to make sure that everything is done fair and square and across the board concerning all districts.
Yes, sir, Mr. Al. It's going to be the same exact size as a Chappelle that's, like I said, 150 feet away. The only difference, color, is going to be the color and the wording on it, and it does meet code.
Okay.
All we did, we just need the variance because it's a little bit larger.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ronnie.
One second, Mr. Morella. Councilman Lahat would also like to comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, Al. Okay, so I did the same thing with the Chappelle scoreboard back in October, and I went through the whole process. If we try to install a scoreboard in a Kenner field beyond 150 square feet, the council has to approve it before Catherine Topol can then do all the inspections and stuff. So I went through the whole process with the same exact scoreboard through October, November, and the reason Ronnie's putting it on so fast today is because East Bank Little League's season's starting, and we want the kids to have the scoreboard because the girls have it. My daughter plays on the Chappelle team, and then Ronnie wants to help East Bank, which is a great program, to have their scoreboard this year. Because if we don't act on it now, the season might be over before the two-meeting thing we have to do. And it's a kid's thing. I think it was appropriate that Ronnie did put this on today, and he is doing it by code because I've already done the same exact thing, if that answers your question.
I thank Councilman Lahat, and I just want y'all to understand why I came up here and brought this up, because I just want to make sure things are done fair and square across the board concerning everyone.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Madam Clerk?
All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15A, I meant, sorry. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,203. An ordinance authorized on a cooperative endeavor agreement with Jefferson Parish accepting a contribution of $282,368.67 towards change orders 1 and 2 to the agreement with Hardrock Construction LLC for the roadway construction of West Esplanade Avenue at Duncan Canal. I have a motion by council member Wilmot, seconded by council member Sharwood. I believe acting mayor would like to comment.
Acting mayor?
Yes, this legislation is very important to the city of Kenner because this $282,000 is going to offset monies that we would be due to the different, to the end of that project. Even though the project took a long time, when you look at it now and you drive over it, those bad memories tend to fade away. I want, at the Jefferson Parish Council meeting, I thank the parish president, Cynthia Lee Shane, the parish council, and Councilman Imbestado for recognizing that we, there was work done on this project that also gave benefit to the Jefferson Parish, and that's why they stepped to the table and put some monies up to offset our future costs. So it's an important piece of legislation, and I just wanted to thank the parish for stepping in and doing this. And Mr. Gonzalez, did you have anything to say?
I would be glad to answer any questions that y'all may have, or the general public may have.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, 4260 East Royal Drive, 50th District, 51 years. I got two things on this item. Number one, I need an explanation why the change order is, why the increase. And second, Acting Mayor Branigan is right, he was at the last parish council meeting, and Councilman Imbestado let it be known that this project was part of the 2030 plan. Now, people in this room who may not know what the 2030 plan was, let me give you a brief history of it. Nine years ago, right around the time when the $80 million in bond debt was placed on the city of Kenner, an additional $37 million more in bond debt was placed on the city of Kenner for that 2030 plan. I have the plan in its entirety with photos of what that 2030 plan was supposed to look like. This was nine years ago. So I want to know why the Jefferson Parish has to donate $282,368.67 to cover change orders that we would put $37 million in debt fund for this 2030 plan. Now, I got the whole plan in its entirety, and I'd be glad to pass it to anybody, everyone in the audience so they can review it. I got it right here, and I'm going to leave it right up here for those who want to look at it. So I need, I need to get.
We're going to get an explanation on that.
Okay, let's, let's do that.
Mr. Gonzalez?
As far as the $282,000 contribution from Jefferson Parish, it's all related to waterline work that had to be performed in order for the city to be able to build that box cover out there. So the waterline work, which is on the parish jurisdiction, was one of the components for this $282,000 contribution. The other component was erosion control measures at the end of the box cover. The canal is on the parish jurisdiction. The box cover would be Kenner, but the canal is on the parish jurisdiction. Therefore, if you combine the water-related work that was on the parish jurisdiction and the erosion control measures that had to be, to take place out there, which is on the parish jurisdiction, that's the parish contribution to what was spent out there as far as the $282,000.
Thank you.
Okay, I got some time left, Ron.
Well.
Okay.
No.
I just want to know what went down with the $37 million, man. That's what I want to know.
Mr. Morella, we're talking just about this right now.
Right. Well, all of this, all of this is included, all of this is involved because Councilman Imbestado let it be known that this project is part of the 2030 plan that Kenner issued $37 million in bond debt fund. So this is all co-related. Councilman Branigan, I'm not a point. So now, I'd like to know what, I asked about the 80 million, now I'm going to ask about the 37 million. What went down with the money? How has that money been used for these projects? And I only see a few projects that's been done in the last nine years.
A number of projects were incorporated into Kenner's 2030 plan. Many of those projects have been completed, okay? One being Ventish and Williams improvements that took place probably like five, six, seven years ago. The other one, Airline Drive and Williams Boulevard intersection improvements, that was completed a while back. I believe Earl Langer pedestrian bypass improvements were part of Kenner's 2030 plan. The DOT is getting ready to bid Williams Boulevard between West Mattery and I-10 probably within the next month. That's going to be like a 10, 12, 14 million dollar project. That was also part of Kenner's 2030 plan. And the DOT is also getting ready to bid Power Boulevard medium improvements that calls for a combination pedestrian bicycle path. So those are two projects that were part of Kenner's 2030 plan. Why they had not been moved on over the last few years, I don't have an answer for that, but all I can tell you is under this new administration, those two projects are moving forward, and they're going to be bid soon by the DOT. forward, and they're going to be bid soon by the DOT, because they both federal aid projects. Now, what projects remain, I think there, there's one or two other projects remain that we're looking at right now, but we can give you a full account of all the expenses and the projects that have been bid, when they were completed, how much they cost, and, and, and depending projects.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jose, and that, that's what I'd like to get. And, uh, okay, if I gotta have a public records request, I will. And one thing, one more thing, Councilman Brennan, in closing, on fifteen A, although on the surface, it looks like it's sincere, but I believe that there are some ulterior motives also involved at play. That's my opinion. Now, anybody got any comments, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Morella.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen B is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and seven, an ordinance declaring three two thousand and thirteen Trek Police Mountain Bicycles and twenty-five Axon X-two tasers as surplus and authorizing their donation to the Harahan Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All councilmembers in favor?
One moment, please.
Okay.
Councilwoman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I just asked the chief, give us an explanation, I know, um, um, we have some good, good responses that we're looking forward to. Thank you.
All right, well, so basically, after the, the new police chief got elected in Harahan, he came to, to my office, and we gave him kind of a tour, and talked about some of the programs and projects that have been so successful and so well-received by our citizens, um, and we talked about the bike patrol, and, um, as you know, Martin Peak donates the bikes to the Kenner Police Department, so we have a plethora of bikes, and we always get the newest and best bike for our officers. So we did have some in surplus, so we're, we are going to donate, um, three of the bikes to the Harahan Police Department, as well as, we have a certified trainer who's going to work with our officers to give them the ability to have a bike patrol as well. So that surplus property that we're just going to donate, and we can do that in accordance with law. Um, the tasers, when we upgraded, um, when we went to the body worn cameras, we upgraded our tasers to, um, to link us to the body worn cameras, so now we have a surplus of tasers that we would not, uh, surplus out by auction, because that's specific to law enforcement, that's not, nothing we want to put out in public. Um, they have a need for it, so we're going to go ahead and donate that to them also with the blessing of the council. Um, it's important to note that in, in our meetings that we've had, we're, we're going back to non-millimeters, he had about thirty-five thousand non-millimeter rounds that he's donating to us as well. So it's just a cooperative effort between two law enforcement agencies to keep this community safe.
And that's, that's good, good work, and we appreciate all your efforts, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman McKenney?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for working with the, you know, other community, um, communities within Jefferson Parish. I think it's great to build those relationships, and just kudos to you, and, as well as the new Harahan chief.
Thank you, and thank you all for your support.
Is it true that one of these bikes has training wheels and a basket on the front? That was the former chief's? I, I'm just asking that. Oh, it hit a bell?
Hit the bell, it was a little flowery, yeah, hit a sissy bar in the back, but, yeah.
Hey, hey. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. All councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen C is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and eight, an ordinance approving an agreement with Shehardy Sherman, Williams, Murray, Rissell, Stecklem, and Hayes, LLP, to provide legal services in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen D is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and nine, an ordinance approving an agreement with Reese Lemieux, LLC, to provide legal services in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen E is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and ten, an ordinance approving an agreement with Simon Paragon Smith and Redfern, LLP, to provide legal services in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen F is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and eleven, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Trinity Tree, LLC, for a two-year contract to provide grass cutting and debris removal in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven thirty-five in an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for the Department of Inspection and Code Enforcement. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen G is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and twelve, an ordinance ratifying an agreement with Motorola Solutions for a Contract Administration and Astro System Advanced Package Service Agreement in the amount of twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen H is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a computer voice stress analyzer, including training, service warranty, and accident protection from NITV Federal Services, LLC, a sole source provider, in the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney.
Councilman Lahat?
Keith, what is a computer voice stress analyzer?
In the old days, it used to be a lie detector test, where they would hook you up to all kind of, um, tubes and materials and, um, ask you questions, and it's a way that you have to do it. Now that it's going by a voice stress, uh, analyzing your voice to see if you own any kind of stress, it's the approved, it's the, the go-to method now to determine deception. Um, we use it for pre-employment phases. The one, it's been in play for about ten years. The, the, the machine they have now is about ten years old. We're getting another one, I'm also having two or three, uh, new officers certified, um, so that we don't have to wait on applicants, we can move our applicants through, uh, at a quicker pace.
Wow, so it's used in a room, or is it investigation?
I'm sorry?
It's used in an investigation purpose.
Well, it's used for applicant investigations, it's not admissible in court.
Got it, okay.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk?
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen I is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and fourteen, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Vulcan Incorporated, doing business as Vulcan Aluminum, to supply aluminum sheet and signed blanks on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid twenty-three dash sixty-seven twenty-nine in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars annually for the Department of General Services. Have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen J is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and fifteen, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Parets Men's Wear Incorporated to supply uniforms citywide on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid twenty-three dash sixty-seven thirty-three in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars annually for the Department of General Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yeah, I want to ask you this, is this the same as what you explained before about why you went over the amount that was bid?
Correct, so, um, the quantities used in the original bid packet may vary depending on what we order, so we're just going with a not to exceed.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen K is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and sixteen, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from NOLA Painting and Finishing, LLC, to furnish and install roofing at Musburger Lino Concession Stand in accordance with letter bid twenty-three dash twenty-five-five for eighteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars for the Department of General Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen L is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and seventeen, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from NOLA Painting and Finishing, LLC, to furnish and install roofing for fire headquarters in accordance with letter bid twenty-three dash twenty-five-four in the amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars for the Department of General Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot.
I want to know, which firehouse is this? Which one is this one?
Which firehouse is this, Councilwoman Dunn?
That's twenty-two twenty-six Williams, headquarters.
That's the one on twenty-two twenty-six Williams Boulevard.
Headquarters.
Okay.
It's headquarters.
Okay.
All councilmembers-
Is this the headquarters?
Yes.
Just one, sir. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen M is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and eighteen, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from TranTex Transportation Products of Texas Incorporated to supply thermoplastic pavement markings in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven thirty in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen N is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and nineteen, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Fleming Construction Company, LLC, for the relocation of a sewer line at lot L-one, Airline Drive, in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven twenty-five in an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen O is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty, an ordinance authorizing the utilization of existing state contract number four-four-zero-zero-zero two-three-three-seven-one with Graybar Electric Company Incorporated to supply electrical supplies on an as-needed basis not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen P is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-one, an ordinance ratifying the emergency purchase of a replacement fire alarm system with, from Simons Industry Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney.
Councilwoman Wilmot?
Yeah, Chief, if you will, explanation?
Yeah, in, in doing our inspections throughout the building, our, our, um, staff found that this, um, fire alarm system is outdated, and that if it were to go down tomorrow, we'd probably have to shut down the building as well as the lockup where we house prisoners, because if we were to have a, a fire and we have inmates, it'd be a problem. So just getting ahead of it, that's why we routed it as an emergency ordinance, but we, we did treat it, we procured it, and, and in accordance with state law, so we got our bids. We're now asking the council to approve a contract in case it goes out, that we have a service provider that could come out and put us back up in service immediately.
So the old system is, is archaic?
The old system is functional and operational, but just looking forward, if there was a problem, it would take a while to get the parts in to modernize the system, so that's what this is for.
So it's all, it's an old system currently, the, the one that's there?
The old system is functional.
Right.
It's just a concern that we're going to have to start moving towards updating the si, the system.
Okay.
And if the system were to malfunction, or a part go out, they don't make the parts for the system anymore.
Thank, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen Q is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-two, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Vehicle Parts and Equipment Company Incorporated to furnish and install police vehicle equipment in accordance with sealed bid twenty-three dash sixty-seven thirty-nine in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, ninety dollars for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen R is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-three, an ordinance approving a purchase from Covington Sales and Service Incorporated, a sole source, a sole authorized dealer for parts and labor to repair unit ninety twenty-six in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and eight cents for the Department of Public Works Division of Streets and Drainage. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen S is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-four, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Automated Control Systems Incorporated to provide preventative maintenance slash service for permanent and portable generators in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven twenty-six in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen T is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-five, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Compliance and Viro Systems, LLC, to provide sanitary sewer evaluation services on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven thirty-one in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Wastewater. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yes, if we can get an explanation on this.
Uh, yes, sir, this is a contract that we, uh, that we've had in the past, and continuing their contract had ended June thirty twenty-two, they're under a six-month contract, and we went out to bid, and this is the results. We use them for, uh, condition assessment of the pipes, also smoke testing, vacuuming, televising when our equipment is down, also, we've used them during storm events or emergency events to provide vacuum trucks and, um, vacuuming services for wet well and collection system services. So we use them during Hurricane Ida, so that's why we also, that's why, um, we have this cost at this amount.
So this has been an ongoing expense that we've been having?
Yes, sir.
And is the three hundred, three hundred thousand annually, is that-
Annually.
Is that typical, or is it, is it an increase?
Um, we, for the last two years, we went to, it was four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars that we used in the last two years, in the last two-year contract. So far, with this, um, amount that we've used for the six months is nineteen thou, almost twenty thousand. And there's going to be another, because we have the large wet well cleanings, that'll be in May before this contract takes place, that will be happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, I just have one question.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Will this take us through the hurricane season?
Uh, this, it's a two-year contract, yes, ma'am.
It's a two-year? Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Ms. Misoni. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.[1734.83]
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen U is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-six. An ordinance approving an agreement with Sigma Risk Management Consulting LLC for consulting services in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars annually. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen V is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-seven. An ordinance repealing resolution number B-one-seven-two-nine-three adopted October sixth, two thousand twenty-two and implementing requirements for the approval of the settlement of lawsuits against the City of Kenner. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney for a one-meeting deferral. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen W is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-eight. An ordinance approving an agreement with Crossroads Center Transportation LLC for wastewater sludge hauling and sludge trailer maintenance and repairs in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Brennan for a two-meeting deferral. Any discussion? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen X is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-nine. An ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement between the City of Kenner and Blue Williams LLP to increase the not-to-exceed amount by fifty thousand dollars. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Lahat.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Yeah, can someone explain this to me? Because it looked like when I was looking at the dates, the dates kind of went in a different direction or something.
Ms. Power? Ms. Power, thank you.
Thank you. The, uh, the Blue Williams Law Firm essentially handles all matters involving the Fire Department, uh, including civil service hearings involving the Fire Department and all litigation involving, uh, the Fire Department, uh, which has been quite, uh, quite a bit lately.
Okay. Let me know which department, okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Ms. Power.
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance adopting the operating budget for the City of Kenner for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Item sixteen B is an ordinance authorizing an agreement with DRC Emergency Services LLC to provide post-disaster services and support in accordance with RFP number twenty-three dash sixty-seven seventeen. Item sixteen C is an ordinance approving an agreement with Surf Pro of Metairie, North Kenner, Harrah Hand for remediation and restoration services in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars for the Department of Finance. Item sixteen D is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Gold Rush Signs LLC to furnish and install one sign at Veterans Park in accordance with letter bid twenty-three dash twenty fifty-nine in the amount of seven thousand four hundred and ten dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen E is being removed from the agenda at the request of the Legal Department. Item sixteen F is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Technology International Incorporated to purchase one battery backup for Star Master at the Planetarium in accordance with letter bid twenty-three dash twenty sixty in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen G is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from B&amp;H Photo Video Pro Audio LLC for the purchase of city cameras in accordance with fax bid T-twenty-three dash twenty-nine seventeen in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. Item sixteen H is an ordinance approving the use of state contract number four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-three-one-nine-four with A&amp;L Sales Incorporated for the purchase of various types of trash bags and can liners on an as-needed basis at a cost not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen I is an ordinance approving the use of state contract number four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-three-three-one-two with Precision Delta Corporation for the purchase of various types of ammunition on an as-needed basis at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen J is an ordinance approving an agreement with Vanderbrook and Company LLC, Certified Public Accountants for Financial Consulting, in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen K is an ordinance approving an increase to the not-to-exceed amount established to furnish and install light bars and sirens from Vehicle Parts and Equipment Incorporated, utilizing state contract numbers four-four-zero-zero-zero-five-four-one-seven and four-four-zero-zero-zero-one-eight-seven-six-one and four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-two-zero-five-one for the Departments of Fleet Management, Police, and Fire. Item sixteen L is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid received from Bayou State to purchase electrical supplies for the sewer lift station at Veterans Boulevard and the parish line in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven forty-three in the amount of thirty-six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and eight, eighty-five cents for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen M is an ordinance authorizing a public hearing and approving the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three dash two thousand twenty-four consolidated plan and the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four annual action plan of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, and the Home Investment Partnership Home Program grant for the Community Development Department. Item sixteen N is an ordinance amending ordinance number seventy-five forty-nine, which dedicated revenues received from the Treasury Test. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
I, I would just like to make one comment. Madam Clerk, please. Um, this past week and the week before, my offices received a lot of calls and complaints. Uh, and I'm sure this has been going on with other off, offices, council offices, and even part of the administration and other departments. We've had some people that have gotten very, very rude with the assistants and with personnel through the city. I understand there's some frustration about some things, but I would just encourage people to, to not take that out on the assistants and directors and other people. Uh, I'm speaking for myself and I, I'm assuming I would speak for the rest of my council members up here. If you have a problem and you don't like something, don't take it out on the employees of the city. Feel free to call your council member. Call me, I don't care if you live in my district or not. These people do a good job. They're committed to the city. They're committed to working and improving things in the city. And it's just not right to, that the way some people have been spoken to in, in different departments and in different levels. And, and it doesn't matter whether you're a director or not a director. These people are people and they're citizens of, of places and they're, they're employees of the citizens of Kenner and they deserve to be treated respectfully and kindly and fairly, whether you like the answer they give you or not. I, I just had to get that off my chest. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and a motions to reconsider or remove from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Al Morella is first, please.
Al Morella, forty-two, sixty East Ohio Drive, Fifth District, fifty-one years. Let me say, Councilman Brennan, I couldn't agree with you more. I have a good rapport with, uh, our employees when I see them riding around in the neighborhood. I communicate with them as well as I communicate with my neighbors. If there's some kind of issue going on, we get it straightened out. Okay, so I agree with you, Councilman Brennan.
Thank you.
Uh, but, but I want to do say, I, I want to say this also. Sometimes it's a double-edged sword, it cuts both ways. Okay? Now, uh, I want to dedicate the rest of my time to some historical events that took place during April. I want to start first, uh, with the sixteenth President of the United States, Abraham Lincoln, who died on April the fifteenth, eighteen sixty-five after being shot, nine hours after being shot the night before at Ford Theater, watching a play called My American Cousin. Okay? The next thing was, there was a second surrender that ended the Civil War. And this was on April eighteenth, eighteen sixty-five. Uh, General Albert Johnson, Confederate general, surrendered to William T. Sherman at Durham Station, North Carolina. We all know the one on April ninth, and Appomattox was the one who stood, that stood. Okay? On April nineteenth, seventeen seventy-five, the American Revolution began uh, with the battles of Lexington and Concord. So, I just figured I'd share with the viewers, to view this meeting, particularly the young kids, because I don't think they'll be taught this in school anymore. So, uh, but anyway, I just wanted to share this with, some of you may know this, some of you may not. So, I just wanted to share it and share it with the young viewers that may be looking, that may watch this meeting. Anybody got any comments, any questions?
I do. Mr. Al, I wanted to tell you, I think you'll think this is funny. I did a Career Day presentation at St. Anne's this week for a bunch of fifth graders and my son was in one of the classes and we talked about American government and I showed him clips from the Kenner Council meetings and I got to the part where, you know, it's a representative body and everybody has a voice and everybody has an opinion and some people have some opinions higher than others. So, I went to a clip from you from December third, talking about the Romelli Pickup Day and the kids got a kick out of it. They liked you, they liked watching you.
Thank you, Councilman Lahat, I appreciate that. That's who I do it for.
And then Richard Brown came up and they thought he was boring, so.
And, look, I, and I want to, I want to say one more thing. I got some time left, uh, Councilman Brennan?
Yes, sir, you have fifty-three seconds.
Okay, okay. Oh, that's plenty of time, man.
Oh, sorry.
I wanted to tell you the kids had a kick out of you and it just, and a representation of someone who didn't like a decision, you can tell a government that and that's how America works, so.
I never profess to be a know-it-all, but, but I'm always trying to expand my knowledge as much as I can because to me, knowledge is power, not money. Okay? Uh, and I want to say one more thing. You know, people talk about our representative government. We got some people who say, uh, who claim that certain councils are illegitimate. Well, let me say this. In nineteen thirteen, the Seventeenth Amendment was enacted to the Constitution. And what that Seventeenth Amendment was? At one time, the senators in Washington DC used to be appointed by the states. The Seventeenth Amendment required that from now on, the senators in Washington DC would be voted in office by the popular vote of the people.
Thank you, Ms. Morella.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody got it? Anybody else want any comments, any questions? I'm out of history and I just study history.
The, uh, my kids also, one of the girls in the back asked a final question and goes, "Why do y'all have council meetings in a submarine?" And I saw the picture of the kid.
Just to tell them it's top secret.
Councilman Brennan.
Assistant Chief. How do you say that, sir?
George Ankeese, Assistant Chief Ankeese. Uh, thank you for letting me address you today. Uh, I come to you with, uh, an informative, good news about the Kenner Fire Department. The other day, of course, the, the police chief, the, the mayor, several councilmen and the fire chief, we were able to address the civic associations in our, in our, in our, in our area for the, for the City of Kenner. And some of the things that were discussed were some of the things that are going on in the Kenner Fire Department. Uh, we did complete our CI SM, uh, training, which is a critical incident management service where a, a fireman or even a policeman, because the, the police department as well does it, would run into a problem on a call and have some mental issues with it that we started our own peer counseling. Of course, this is regional. The regional director of it is actually out of New Orleans and it's the NOPD guy, but there's, it goes away to the state police and it incorporates almost every emergency service that's in the state of Louisiana. It's actually run by the Southern, um, was it the Southern Louisiana Law Enforcement Agency is what it is, SLA, something like that. Extremely, extremely informative, wonderful class. We took three of us, went up there to Lafayette for it this last week. We actually need another five to go. The class is absolutely free. Obviously, how far you go is how far you pay. We have, we have five more that we need to get. We also are incorporating a chaplain coming up, uh, probably the beginning of next month. We'll have a chaplain in place. We also are looking at our deficit with the amount of emergency medical calls. We've all addressed them as we go along. I know you're going to not hear this, but you're going to hear me up here in the future asking for, uh, we need Lucas machines. We only have three. Lucas machines are machines that help us do CPR. They help us do CPR, but it also helps the fireman make the next call. CPR is very hard to do correctly. Most people see it on TV and you think you see somebody pushing on somebody's chest and it's really a, it's a pretty strenuous thing to do. Do it for a good three to five minutes and you wore out. We need Lucas machines. You're going to see us, uh, come across, coming across real soon. I, uh, put together to order us all new high-rise packs. High-rise packs are how we fight fires in buildings over three stories. We're also putting in for, uh, blitz nozzles. Blitz nozzles help us, again, with structures and, and fighting fire with multiple structures. More training, more things. Be prepared to see us up here. I, I thank you for letting us talk to civic associations the other day. I'd like to see us be able to get in front of more of them. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments and your service. Councilman Schwab?
George?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, buddy.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with, uh, a hundred percent. I know we got, uh, a lot of people out here don't know what a high-rise pack is, but I've carried them before and we know it's not the easiest thing in the world.
Then you remember they were made out of old green army bags?
Oh, yeah.
That's the same ones I'm replacing now.
It's the same, it's the same.
So, when you see it come across, I need an eye.
I got you, bud. I got your back.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Chief, uh, how do you say that last name, sir? Morris?
Maurice.
Maurice.
How y'all doing?
Good afternoon.
I didn't, uh, force him to come up here. But I just wanted to, uh, make the council and the community aware that, uh, last, on the thirteenth, since the last meeting, we, uh, hosted a graduation for recruits where we hosted a, the, the Kenner Fire Department actually hosted the classes. It's, uh, about our fourth one that we did and we had, uh, seven different departments from the region compete, uh, attend the class and we graduated nineteen new firefighters. Six of them was for Kenner itself, so we have six new firefighters in station. Uh, we are fully staffed currently at the time. Uh, we're looking to hire six more next fiscal cycle because we have several members that's going to retire this coming up fiscal cycle, so we should not fall below our minimum staffing level any time this year. Hopefully, we don't fall below that. This is our rating year, uh, for PL. The data that's collected, most of the data is used from this year. It actually goes back five years since we had our last rating, the data that they compiled. But the bulk of the data comes from this year, so we are pushed to, uh, get every, all our ducks lined up in a, in a row to make certain we, uh, achieve, you know, the Class One. But our goal is not to achieve the Class One. Our goal is to achieve the highest Class One in the state, which is great for, for us to say that Kenner Fire Department is one of the best fire departments rated in the state of Louisiana, which will, of course, makes us one of the best rated departments in the nation. When you look at it in totality, the rest of the nation use ISO and Louisiana uses, uh, PL, which is similar rating systems to compare fire departments apples to apples. On Wednesday the nineteenth, we had the regional chiefs meeting. I guess a couple of, uh, uh, elected officials attended that, that meeting. Uh, we had it at Chateau Country Club, again, with the regional fire chiefs from St. Tammanyham and Plaquemine, St. Bernard, Jefferson Parish, several, uh, parish chiefs re, meeting. And what we're trying to do is put together a recruitment PSA because we starting to see the beginning, beginning of, uh, a decline in members, uh, persons interested in joining the fire service. So, we don't want to get behind that, that curve. We'd rather be ahead of it and put, uh, the PSA out to start recruiting more people into the fire service. With that, uh, regionally, we're discussing doing training amongst the departments where we allow each other members to attend the individual trainings, uh, outside of the basic training where you get the officer training, the different officer trainers, the instructor trainers, the USAR trainings, extrication, you name it, that we do in the fire service. So, we're going to do that as, on a regional level. We starting to train as departments on a regional level because of the threats that communities face these days are no longer just isolated threats. They can be massive threats to where we have multi-jurisdictional responses to those incidents. So, we need to have familiarity with the players that's involved in that. In that meeting, we, we talked about, uh, apparatus. You know, Jefferson Parish has about a seven-year turnover for their apparatus. New Orleans has, uh, six new apparatus on order and when they come in, their oldest apparatus will be a twenty-eighteen. Plaquemine Parish just got three new pumpos in and they are, they have, uh, they ordering two more this year. I say that to say this. Our oldest apparatus is nineteen ninety-four. We need to, um, do that. We are compiling starting salaries, uh, for the region, so when members come into the fire service, they will know comparatively, apples to apples, what you make at each individual department because the fire pay structure is so complicated overall in the grand scheme of things that when you start to compare one salary to another, it's not just the hourly rate, but it's the overall compensation that you get from working from one department to the next. So, we end up, uh, not cannibalizing each other's department. Where a, a guy will leave Kenner to go to East Bank Consolidated thinking they making more money and in the long run. more money, and in the long run, you actually may end up actually better in Kenner over the long haul of a career than jumping ship. So, we're looking at doing those sorts of things. And I said all that to say basically this, guys, we could have the best department, the best rated department in the state, in the nation, but if we don't have better equipment, better training, and better compensation for these guys, you know, I think our apparatus are misplaced. So, with that, if y'all have any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Councilwoman Dunn?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out yesterday in the dedicatorial, the author in Shirley Burton Way. I want to thank the mayor, the police chief, the council. You all don't realize how much that means to this district, but it means a lot because, you know, for a long time, many of the councilpeople, the mayor would come out and not really stay, but you all have been God sent, and I just want to let you know that all that I hear from the constituents, that they are so pleased and they ask that, even with the administration and Mark Gloroso, he just stepped in and just did his job, and we really thank you all for that, and they ask me to make sure that I relate that back to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brian. Councilman Lahatt?
Yeah, Dea, I was honored to be there yesterday. You can tell the people like you in your district and that you're doing a good job. The Burtons are great and a longtime family here. Also, I want to remind everybody, tomorrow in Driftwood, there's a crawfish cook-off from eleven to four. Ronnie's actually gonna be out there cooking and he usually wins these things, so come eat some of his food, it's ridiculous. So, I have a little fun run in the morning as well, but that's at Galatas Park in Driftwood, pretty much all day tomorrow, so feel free to come by. Thank you so much.
Mayor Brown again?
I just want to ask Councilmember Dunn why she didn't climb the ladder to take that, unveil that sign.
Well, the mayor, you know, he and I were debating about it and he said, you know, "How are we gonna handle this?" I said, "You get on one side of the ladder, I get on the other side." So, he chickened out and Mark decided to get on the ladder for us.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilwoman Wilmot to adjourn.
Whoa. God, did you break that thing?